I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I hope that we approve the agenda as written.
Alright, all in favor of approving the agenda as written signify my saying aye.
You missed me.
Did you miss? I didn't.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
So, all in favor of approving the agenda, so you can talk at the same time?
Aye.
Alright, the agenda is approved, so moving on to the replacement levy failure implications.
Okay.
What do we have?
We, will you pull up the PowerPoint? I mean the slide deck. Um, anyway, we are gonna go over a few things about our priorities and planning for budget and I'm gonna levy. They don't work right now. They are being repaired. So they'll either on your computers or if you don't have them, you have to look over by Jackie tonight. So apologize for that. Hopefully it will be back installed before the next board meeting. That's our goal. So, um, I wanna start and we can just move through the next to the third slide fairly quickly. But we really wanna talk about, to start with, have you given you guys some time as a group to talk about the responses to this survey? And, um, with an idea of what did you learn from looking through that data? So, we had sent you some, some information from the survey that we did. And what I've included in the next two slides are, um, kind of the preview of what was in there. So in our survey, we asked four questions. Uh, the first one was just to kinda get a, uh, take a temperature and see, um, did people vote? Um, did they not vote or did they prefer not to say in the last levy election? And then we next asked them when it came to school programs. How much, um, do each of the items matter to you? And, uh, the items that we asked them to consider, extracurriculars, um, out of district transportation for athletics, security, technology upgrades, students to staff ratios, student materials, um, everything mattered. Those are all very important things. And, um, then question on the next slide, we had a total of ninety-nine responses. There were seventy-six different responses, um, where people could, um, respond to a more open-ended question. So please share with us what you value most when it comes to the student educational experience. And things that came up a lot, um, included class size, safety and security, variety of programs that meet student needs. You were able to look through the, the data and I'm kind of going over this quickly so that hopefully then we can open a discussion among the board before we move on about what you learned from reading through people's survey responses. Then we'll move on to the same thing with the community conversation. Um, and then we asked people, if you were to, the board were to choose a new date to run the replacement level, which would you prefer? And, um, August was the first choice, November was the second choice, but no preference was, um, pretty close to August. Forty for August and thirty-five for no preference. So that's the survey piece and you've got to read all of the individual responses as well. So I'd like to just take a few minutes now to, for me to quit talking and for the board to speak with one another about that survey and thoughts that you might have.
So. Arla, you got anything else right down there? What are you hearing?
Um, no, I... Do we wanna talk about them separate or what is the benefit of talking about the survey and the forum separately versus collectively?
In case you, I was thinking, in case you had any thoughts that you didn't wanna have to hold, but...
I don't, I don't know that I'm ready to, I, no, I don't have any thoughts at this time. Like, it's not surprising, I'll say that, like, the responses we've heard and clearly, I think it was what was to be expected in terms of what people's priorities were. You know, everything's important. Yeah, the date is interesting, but I'll talk about that more as the community responses sort of forum.
No, I would agree. I mean, most of the responses, it was pretty well what, tracking with what we expected, I felt like. Um, but as I went through it, I just was... I guess the bigger question to me was, I was like, man, I, I know there's so many people that have opinions on this that aren't giving it to us. Or there's those that aren't even willing to go in a different direction. So, and then also looking at how current climate has also been, the level of tension around some of these things has, has gone up quite a bit too, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, I had to break. Um, are we just talking about our overall feeling or are we, um, talking? Can I add in, like, what I learned overall about it?
Yeah, but we're gonna go to there in a minute. If you, if there is anything specific to this, I thought it would just give you a chance to kinda ground that and then move into the next.
So my specific is I think that people want what we want. Um, and I'll go into more, uh, when we get to the specifics. Um, but like, he's saying that people are saying, you know, they want these things, but they're not willing to vote yes, maybe? Or that, um, I, there's still a lot of reasons and I've heard a lot of things, so, yeah.
I mean, I think the biggest part is that, uh, a lot of what we've talked about before, during a lot of the sessions really came out in that survey. I think there's a lot of it that talks about, across the board of, there wasn't really one thing that I saw that jumped off the page. It was more of, everything was real close to each other with all the topics and stuff. So I thought, you know, that was interesting, um, seeing it. I'm happy that we had some responses. I wish, I just wish there would have been more. You know, we have a lot of voters out there and I wish that voters would have seen the survey more and took it, you know, to provide their feedback as well.
And we had a very limited time to collect that. I think one of the recommendations I would make going forward would be to spend some more time gathering that kind of input and being really deliberate about it and maybe look at doing some polling kinds of things as well, uh, to give us some really clear information. But moving forward, we also had the community conversation and we each hosted a table and, and took really good notes that we are, have, are able to have shared and are able to share with the community as well. But we did hear quite a bit about funding priorities. And there were kind of five big areas that I think you could, we can put them in, which include, um, extracurricular, extracurricular activities and student well-being. And that's a pretty broad area because it includes both sport, as, as well as sports, music and clubs and other extracurriculars. Um, talking about how, people talked about how those are important for students' social emotional health and for their academic success and their overall well-being. And that it's important to maintain those programs along with other ways that we support them. And then equitable access and community involvement and guaranteeing that our programs are equitable in access. And resources for all students regardless of where they come from or what's going on at home. Community involvement, including maybe looking at expanding volunteer programs, transparent communication is valued. We heard about, um, how important having a relevant and effective educational, uh, education opportunity for our kids is and making sure that we have real, well-rounded academics, vocational or CTE training and real-world skills. And that it's important to have appropriate well-maintained, maintained technology to support the learning of our students. And then also safety and security was a huge priority. And people mentioned things, the safe school environment with locked doors, cameras, security personnel and adequate supervision. And then, um, question, dividing it down into questions. Question number one that we asked, what is the, are the most important priorities to consider with funding for instructional staff? So, um, again, big buckets that we put those responses into. Making sure that we have optimal staffing and resource allocation, comprehensive student supports, meaningful and relevant curriculum and that we focus on teacher quality and maintaining or growing that quality through professional development. Question number two was, what are your thoughts on technology upgrades to student learning devices? And people gave us really in-depth answers to that question. They spoke about things like making sure that the technology that we make available and expect students to use is age-appropriate. Um, and we focus on quality over quantity, that technology is a tool versus a teaching strategy. The prac, um, they talked about being practical, um, and about our resource management. Talked about the financial and logistic challenges of implementing and maintaining technology in schools. And then finally equitable access and future readiness, ensuring that all students have proper access to technology so that we, our students are not left behind. And in this area emphasize the need to teach digital literacy, including AI literacy. Question number three, what safety measures do you consider most important for ensuring a secure and supportive environment? So, um, people talked about increased security measures, um, and brought up the idea of metal detectors potentially as well as, um, more dedicated security personnel or security personnel dedicated to buildings, especially in areas with higher student traffic like hallways, bathrooms, parking lots. Enhance staffing for supervision and support, that we need staff who can do that, um, to increase student supervision and safety as well as social emotional staffing counselors to support students in dealing with crises and provide support beyond scheduling. Community involvement and volunteerism, talked about utilizing our volunteers like our, um, our dads program that we had for a long time at the elementary schools to support and to supplement staff supervision during recess or activities would be something to consider. And increasing community involvement in school safety was an idea that was shared. And then maintaining and improving order and accountability and emphasis on maintaining order in hallways and passing periods and greater accountability within the school environment. Question number four was, what value do extracurricular activities bring to students and which program you, do you feel are most important to maintain? So again, four big buckets. The vital role of extracurricular activities, that people talked in the group a lot about how important extracurriculars are to supporting students' development and different extracurriculars for different kids. But, um, in all cases, kids need other things besides just academics to grow and thrive. Equity and access to opportunities, um, making sure that kids have access to extracurriculars in a way that's comparable to other districts. And highlighted the importance of fee waivers and the impact of extracurriculars on scholarship oppor, opportunities for kids. And then maintaining diverse and essential programs. People talked about maintaining a wide range of programs, including music, sports, STEM and vocational classes like SHOP. Recognizing the diverse benefits of those, all of the different kinds of programs. Special education, college readiness courses, courses. And transportation was brought up especially for West Sound Tech and Field Trips as essential. And then finally, in this area, impact on student well-being and community morale. If, um, the loss of extracurriculars is seen to have a significantly negative impact on student mental health and community perception of the school district. And then finally, um, so those were the, the big four questions. We also, I think I'm missing one. Um, we talked about funding parameters. And so the board has directed us to fund a comprehensive educational program reflecting community values. This is directly out of our board policy. This includes community and staff priorities for student learning and research-based practices. In addition, it is stated that our general fund expenditures will be based on staffing at the funded levels consistent with state funding formulas and contractual obligations. Staffing above funded levels depends on the resources available as well as our district goals. Initial staffing to schools shall be based upon the state funding formula as reflected in actual apportionment and as established in the state budget. Apportionment does not fully fund the prototypical model positions allocated at our current compensation levels. So, oh. So those are all the priorities. I left question five for last and separate from the priorities because that's where we asked, do they have, you know, what, when and how do they think we should run another levy? So, at this point in now, I think would be a really good time to reflect on what we heard about the priorities of the committee members who either participated in the community conversation or tying that together with what you read from the survey results. And, um, kind of wanna get some, some feedback on where the board sees those priorities that we can use in our budget planning process as we go further into this or next year.
So. How do we wanna approach? I said, you wanna, let's just talk about that, talk about the priority stuff, or? So. You guys wanna get, do we wanna get into the questions and kinda the feedback that folks had at their tables?
Yeah, that sounds good. I can start.
I was the technology question, which was very, very interesting because I came into it kind of just with a blank brain about it. My child is in kindergarten and, um, you know, I just haven't put a lot of thought on a personal level to like the technology you set, you know, in his, in his classroom. And I, first of all, will say like, I thought the forum was really well-attended. We had a really good mix of parents and teachers and community members. And so in my notes, I, what surprised me kind of right off the gate, the different groups that came to the table to talk about tech. There was, you know, obviously this vein of like, yeah, obviously we need upgraded technology. We need to make sure, as it's reflected here, that our students have digital literacy, AI literacy, these things. But there wasn't quite a big resistance to technology or that sort of surprised me. And as we were getting into it with the different teachers and the different parents, I, I could see, I understood what some of the concerns were. And my takeaway truly was that having, making sure the technology we have, especially in terms of the technology that is vital to some students' learning. Some of our students with disabilities have, um, you know, use technology to communicate and that type of thing. Our translation devices, obviously that, we need to be considering that piece of it. But there really was this sense of like, we do not need one-to-one devices for small children, K to three maybe even. Um, and I heard that repeatedly from different groups and from teachers feeling frustrated at how much technology is eating up a lot of instructional time, just like. And then I thought about it, I was like, yeah, if I was a teacher and this student needs a password reset, I'm gonna be pulled over here to help them, then that kid needs help, then that page isn't loading and on and on. And so I, people were really communicating to me that that was an area where they could see some more creative thinking about it, where maybe devices are limited to like, you know, like a compute, like four computer stations in the classroom instead of everybody having a device and then not, the district not having to, um, expend resources on giving each child a device and also not expending resources on mass upgrades. Like, okay, we have to, you know, and maybe doing that more in smaller waves, um, different things like that. I, it wasn't that people were anti-technology, it was just that they felt like it was a crutch for some teachers. They felt like it was diluting some of the students' learning abilities and that, you know, we all have concerns about just too much screen time in general and what's that, what that's doing to our students. So that surprised me that, and it was good conversations.
So, Arla, for clarification, was that more specifically toward younger children or all children, all students? Or somewhere?
More specifically younger children, right, like as they're getting older. And then there was talk of like, at the high school, needing more computer science classes and that there was sort of a lack of that, you know? But I think mainly the younger students is what people were talking about. And, you know, maybe identifying, um, some of the, I don't know, cause I, I don't know how to say this, but the kids that are breaking computers are the same kids that are breaking computers and losing computers all the time. And so finding a way to minimize that, um, resource loss was important.
Thank you.
I was working, so I wasn't there.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I mean.
I was at all the other ones.
Well, I had question number five and I know we're gonna pop down to that. Um, part of the technology thing, I think that, not in the group that we were talking about, but, um, in the otherwise and talking to other people and people talking. Um, I, the, people agree that James Taylor is big about technology because they run their whole classroom to, everybody's at a different level and they're all using a computer. And they really love that the kids have their phones. Well, I don't, I think that the kids love that they have their phones. They give them, but they, they give them a quiet time and the kids, my kid is in James Taylor. So, and those kids have separate lives. They're, it's not more of a connection and buddy-buddy type of thing. They're more like in their, their elements are separate. So, I think in certain situations, um, that it's really good. And in the high school, I think it's a really big thing because they're gonna be moving into that. And I think the last year, and this is what I think other people, and I'm saying I think because of feedback and my own, of like the last year of middle school. But I think what I've heard, I think what I heard, what I've heard with other people and myself is elementary, didn't, my son kinda started out when we kinda started out putting the computers in front of him. Um, but moving on, we broke three computers. And we didn't really break it, you have to pay for the whole computer if you break off the edge. And it was another kid, they would come over and knock his computer off all the time. And we paid for two computers that way. So, I think the young kids learning the respect by the middle school, maybe their last year, I think that that one, I think a lot of people are on that, but it is useful and...
I guess my question down that road is, are we talking about breaking the asset and worrying about the computer replacement or the instruction that occurs from the device? Cause right, at the end of the day, the instruction that's being provided through the technology, right, is, whether it's this computer or ruggedized, you know, military ruggedized computer that can bounce off the ground, right?
Yeah.
We've gotta look at what is being conveyed, I think, from the technology and being taught to the kids, right? And I think you're right, it, younger ages, it's hard, right? And I know the password thing is super hard. But, you know, for any of us that work over there now or we're having to remember, you know, nineteen-digit, you know, special character, uppercase, lowercase, right? It's gotta start somewhere. And it's, I think there's other routes that we could take to help that problem, right? But to me, right, it gets back to that. What do we, the material that we're instructing the kids cannot be done in a different fashion? Or is the laptop the best platform to be able to teach, right?
And that's part of the consideration today. Most learning materials, that's how you're gonna get them now electronically. There's no buying a social studies textbook that's four inches thick anymore. It doesn't exist.
Right. Well, and the last, the last part of that was the other, the last part. Um, the, the people that I hear talking about being against it are more in the elementary school saying that they really need to be hands-off the computers. And then, but it's not everybody. And there's a big majority, not a majority, big amount of people that are for the technology because they don't get it at home, um, so.
Well, and that is, sorry, Arla, that is an issue in our community because we still have about fifteen to eighteen percent of our families that do not have connectivity. And one of the things that people brought up repeatedly was equity. And kids in communities like ours are at a disadvantage because we are, they are not getting the opportunity to be developing those skills that kids in more urban areas are developing. And it will put them, is putting them at a disadvantage in the future workplace. So, we have to be the place for that. So, I hear, you know, let's think about what we're doing with our littles. But at the same time, we do have to balance that with, just like if we talk about our kids in athletics and don't have the opportunities for travel teams like they do in some bigger spaces. Our kids don't have the opportunities to engage as deeply sometimes in technology or at least in a, a large number of our homes because there is no access. So school does have to be the place.
Yeah, I think it could look like though, and I, I don't have the familiarity with what is actually in practice. But, because our, we are one-to-one. So, I mean, does it look like something like instead of having ninety laptops for the first grade, you have thirty and they're switching on and off, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't know if that's reasonable.
And that's a good question and, and something to talk about.
Right.
Yeah.
I appreciate that perspective, Arla, cause I kinda go, so when you talk about equity, Dana, I'm thinking of equity among our surrounding districts and a lot of districts now are one-to-one.
Right, right, right.
So if we, I've always been like, oh, if we don't do one-to-one, our kids are, and many levels, they're already at a disadvantage than our surrounding districts, especially the kids' districts. So, that's definitely a different perspective in terms of, is it actually hindering more than helping our students? Because, you know, when you, when you get the, when you get the littles, and you're in the computer lab in the, well, at least Felder Library and the kindergartners come in, you can tell which kindergartners have the latest technology at home. I mean, and this was years ago, but they like touch the computer screen, they're like, it's not touchscreen. I'm like, no, it's not, sorry. And then there's another kindergartner that you have to show them how to use the mouse.
Right.
So.
And that's peace, right, that's not gonna change, right?
Right.
Yeah.
It's one of those hard things where we wanna balance what we're hearing from the parents and family members with, we need to fill the gap though in a lot of students' lives.
And I was just gonna say, I think from a budget standpoint, it's, it's something that we need and I, I mean, we're never gonna make everybody happy on that screen time and how often they get it. So it may down, come down for us as far as like, well, how often do we get to refresh these things?
Right.
Like, or are there ways that we can break up contracts to make it a payment? That it fits within our allocation or things like that, just to...
And at the end of the day, endpoint devices like this are not much of your IT.
Yep.
Right. They're, they're not gonna be a ton of it, right? Your backend, everything that you run is, wherein the licenses, that's like, our license fee is probably huge, right? With how many licenses we're paying for office and for all these, you know, programs that the teachers utilize for instruction, right? So that's where a lot of it are our phones.
Well, and I think you could argue, from what I've heard too, teachers felt like there, there's time being wasted also by like things not working, things breaking down. So how to, you know, making sure that our technology is upgraded to where you know, we're not losing instructional time.
Agreed.
Messing around.
And it's, there's a, a very hard piece right there, because it's what you're talking about specifically, right, is a lot of the backend stuff. It's not necessarily the laptop that's causing the problem. It's, hey, the wireless network in here is over, over flooded, and we need to upgrade it, or it's, you know, our server that everyone's logging on to, right, is overloaded, needs to be refreshed. Right? Things of that nature. Or
Or even personal staff.
This is how to be, is, they had a server upgrade that if we did not upgrade, the server would die. Right? And as a result, there were some things that changed. Right? Not much you could do about it, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's just the way it's gonna work out. A lot of headaches come with it, but yeah.
Yeah. I think you could also make the argument that we need more IT specialists, more, right?
So, so what do we think about the security?
That was, yeah, that one was mine. Um, I thought was interesting, and I was going into this with like, okay, we've prioritized what's really important to the community, and then what's maybe not so important, and that'll help us figure out what we're going to cut. Instead, I heard a lot of like, we need more this, we need more this, and I'm like, oh, okay, so like we actually didn't get more money, we lost money. Um, so oh god, our community has so many great ideas, and they care so much, and it was, I mean, it's all pretty much here. They, they want us to have more people on the ground, more, more eyes on the kids. Um, they wanna volunteer and be involved, and I know there's parameters around that, but um and then of course, like, they probably did with a lot of you, is the conversations start going in all directions. And it was interesting that there was as much information as we've put out there, there was still a lot of people that like didn't know things, right? So describing why we are transporting one student to Tacoma. And they were just like, oh, oh, that makes sense. But when they had seen that line item, it really upset them. Um, and so I think we got a lot of good ideas, and I, and I had emailed them to Dana about they were, they want to help us. I think like Leanna said, there's a lot of them that want this, and they want to give us suggestions on how we can tackle this. I think it's just like, we're getting ourselves over and over again, and maybe highlighting some of these things on this wish list that they all want for technology, for security, for extracurriculars. Um, just saying again and again and again, yes, we want to provide these. We want your children to have these, but we're gonna need those.
There's, it almost makes you feel like with this, this could be part of our messaging towards the next one, like, even if we show like, hey, here's the wish list. This is what we would like to provide for your, the children and for the community. And if we don't get the levy, this is what we can do.
Yeah.
Like, apples to apples, yeah.
The, the hard part is, I think every single one of us that's sitting up here would love to have two security guards driven every single building. Right? Or adding a, you know, more ca- upgraded camera systems, or, you know, threat detection stuff. There's all sorts of technologies and safety upgrades that we could be making, right? And I think all of us would like it. It's more of just trying to figure out, right now, we've got two security guards?
Three.
Three? Three security guards?
This year.
But we have allocated.
And we're allocated for
For allocated for point three of the security guard?
Yeah.
So it's, it, it's one of those things where it's okay, and now we're losing that point three. Right? And so it's just, it, that I think is the hardest piece to try to figure out, is where do we draw that line?
Just because you're mad at the state and taxes, don't take it out on us.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I mean, I know exactly the gentleman who was talking about that there. I, I understand where he's coming from, right? And it's if you look at some of the stuff out there, it's there are some, we are up against a very, very difficult piece right now with where they're looking at, and if they go down and try to raise some of our property taxes, right, for the state's budget, that's gonna affect us. Because it's hard for us to ask for more when they're already getting increased, and they have a choice for ours, they don't have a choice for the other.
And, and on that, what that's going to do is bad line, we know how we have four different areas on our budget that are labeled schools. Those two that are state schools' money are going to increase without them taking a vote if the legislature finishes the session the way that it sounds. That it's going to, which is gonna make our job, job harder. And so I think the work that you're doing right now, and beginning to do, and more work with building and listening to the community is going to be essential to getting a positive outcome, because we're going to have to overcome people's reaction to that.
So on that, um, at my table, I got to see from the first table over here, um, moved all the way to the end, and some of the, the last person at one of the table, at my table at the end, has been somebody that's been here for a really long time, and she has a very loud voice, and I love her. Um, and her voice matches a lot of other voices that I hear in the community. Um, and what, they, they're like, the communication, we just wanna be talked to. And I'm like, you're not wrong, because communication is hard. Um, I think when we're getting something out, and I said, you can put this out on the Facebook, and you see it one time, and it's gone, because I, I do the Belfair Network admin, and we get a hundred posts a day. And people complain that their post doesn't get up, so you're on there like, pop, 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 and you're rolling them out. Well, number one, just got, it's gone. And if it's a big item, I'm willing to put that up two or three times, instead of knocking it, especially if it's a local web encompasses the community. So, um, these people are saying that they want to be met where they're at, and they're not on Facebook, especially our older people that have been used to voting yes. They said, I didn't vote, or I voted no this time, because I haven't seen anybody or anything in my mailer. And it's like, okay. And then they're like, why not, we have so many buildings. And this is where I was thinking too, is we have so many buildings in Belfair, like the Port of Allen, and To Huya Hall, and we have all of them. And I know that we have these, these community forums here, but not everybody can get here. Um, and if we had them all around, people said, I said, I didn't really bring that up, but they were like, man, if you, if you reached me where I was at, I would have voted yes. And I'm like, that, I'm not gonna say how I feel about that, because I'm that person too. My husband's a federal government worker, and he is the only person that brings the main money into our house. And so we're up against that right now. And that is a huge amount of this area. And if, if I lose, my husband said, I'm gonna retire, and I know it's personal here, but it matters, this, it's mixed into our stuff here, but he said, I've been here for twenty years, and they offered me uh, that I can retire right now. And I'm like, oh, Jesus Christ, please don't. And I freaked out, and a lot of families are doing this, and I cried, and I'm like freaking out. And a lot of people are out there taking it because the government pushed it down, so this is a great idea for you. No, it's not. We have a financial advisor. It's not. But if that happened to people here, they're gonna keep voting no. A lot of those people though, would still vote yes. They, if they were reached personally.
Well, and, and I think those are important, but I do have to point out, we have paid attention to people in the past and what they've told us. And on the levy prior to this, we found out that when we still continued to go to all of those places to meet people, there weren't anybody coming to those meetings, because fewer and fewer people belong to the organization. So we, I, I believe you do have to do that going forward. But we have to be more creative. We can't rely on, let's go to the service clubs, let's do this, because their membership has decreased. So we have to figure out different ways to meet groups of people. So maybe it is doing things like going to the fire hall or doing here, or things, and just saying, we're going to be here and do an, an evening.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, rather than Going to meetings. I'm not talking about that. I mean, like, we're put out a thing that says, tonight, we're gonna be at this hall tonight. So limited amount of people, we wanna get the local here, and the next one's gonna be at this building. And then that building, and then that building. I think that that, that's, well, and that, people don't like you walking door to door. They'd rather you at the end of their driveway. So this is where they were saying, the people, that it's kinda scary to go door to door nowadays. It's better, have you seen it on a ring, on a ring video, right? And they're like, who's this? You know, it's a guy trying to sell something, you know? So at these things, people can all decide to come there, or it can be videotaped or whatever, but
Put a sign on my back, school board.
There you go.
Yeah.
With a target on it.
Are we getting into like?
So, yeah, we're getting into, like, where were the committee work that would go on there?
The timing.
But I think
Well, you wanna know why, so.
Was there anything that you guys had on? Question one, that we wanted to talk about?
Who had question one? Is that one of those, or?
That was important, most important priorities for, um, to consider with funding for instructional staff. That might have been Amber's question.
Um.
So I can review that a little bit, because you guys were there. People really, the people who attended talked a lot about class size and trying to maintain smaller class sizes. Um, having enough staff, having our pay competitive. And one of the areas they talked about that is with our substitute costs. And we are actually having to look at this because we keep, we keep trying to keep our substitute costs competitive. We're below the curve again, and we're gonna have to raise it for next year. Um, so, you know, those kinds of things are really important, but that's also another example. So the state funds us, teachers have, as an example, different, um, employee groups have slightly different contracts, but in the teacher's contract, there's twelve sick days, right? But the state assumes that each teacher is only gonna be sick for three days. So that's what they fund. Um, and they fund it at less than anybody pays for a sub, but closer to what we do than some other people. And, um, they don't fund any substitute days for classified employees. Most classified employees also have twelve, at least twelve sick days. Um, and then there are other things in different groups' contracts. So, um, that is something that we have to build into our budget plan without, you know, as part of what comes out of that maintenance, supplies, and operating costs piece, because it's not coming out of anything else that the state gives us. So those are things that I think, um, will help people to understand better why we need levies, if we could be really specific with some of those kinds of details too. There was a bill this session to fund a few more Sundays, but it's not gonna make it, so, um, we're gonna be stuck at that for right now. And then they talked about making sure we have the right supports for the different needs that kids have. Our community is very cognizant and of the fact that kids have lots of different needs, and they want us to be able to support all those needs. And we're fortunate, not all communities feel that way. So that, um, is really important. And that we have meaningful and relevant curriculum, curriculum that will prepare the kids for the future. Very, very important. And then again, they talked about making sure we have the ability to provide development for our staff, to help them.
And, and I think it's important, because I think that encompasses too about some of the funding from the levy supports of helping kids with IAPs, helping kids with 504s, and some of the extra effort that we have to put in there for those kids. Having a couple of kids and myself, right, being dyslexic a little bit, is, it's important that you get that extra attention, because it makes a huge difference.
And, yeah, and we know, we have to, we are funded in the basic um, apportionment for three parapros for the whole district. I think, um, we don't have any, does the high, maybe the high school only has a few, but our elementaries both have an over fifteen parapros each to meet all the needs of kids right now. So we've gotta figure out how to meet those needs with fewer dollars to support them, and we're still gonna have to meet those needs without the levy or until the levy passes. So I, I, I think people do understand these things, but I think reflecting on what they said to you, to all of us the other night, we need to be really clear with the examples of what having fewer dollars means.
Yeah, and I think this gets to what Leanna is saying, and as we get into this discussion about timing, because I also think we need to be thinking about the bond. Um, and the fact that we're gonna have a new superintendent, like, all of this plays in together and could even be folded together. You could have, we're going to have a superintendent who is going to need to introduce herself to the community in a big way. Um, you could have something like a, you know, like a tour, like a presidential tour where they're going, and it's just this hard hit. And you have someone representative, a representative from the levy committee, from the bond committee, school board members. And I feel like we just have to blast people with this. I think we're all saying the same thing about showing the stark contrast. This is, you know? Um, and so I'm curious with this conversation here, I know we're talking about when we might run a levy, but are you also wanting from us, Dana? Prioritization on like, right now, we're losing money, you know, we're not gonna get this pot of money. You wanna hear, do you want to hear from us? What we need to, what you need to be focusing on, and what can be cut?
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to make cuts probably across the board.
Right.
So there's not gonna be any area that doesn't feel the pain. Um, but yeah, I wanna hear from you, um, priorities. I think, as we noted, Nicole noted, Arla, we all noted, I think it was pretty clear that the community members value everything that we do, and this is gonna be hard and painful. Um, that if there are any really outs, you know, things that are standing out there for you, and then I think you really set us up to move into the next part of the conversation is um, question number five was, when we consider running a second attempt at a replacement levy, what things should we consider to determine the best timing? And as part of that, I invited Cassie Hibbert from our, um, Wenaha group, who's leading, helping us, our bond committee move forward. Because we've been talking a lot about the intersection between where we are with the levy and where we want to be with the bond, and some communications tools, like polling and stuff that we might consider. And, um, the timing of our original bond, um, plan was to be gathering some community in feedback to some presentations from the bond committee this summer. And when we have our meeting tomorrow night, we're gonna talk about some things related to this intersection and this conversation that we're going on, going through right now. And so, um, I, I invited Cassie here to talk a little bit with us about that too, because I think there's some really good ideas to consider about how those things can, and as Arla just said, can be melded together along with Dr. Michael's arrival to create kind of a, a flywheel to move the things in a positive direction, so I know we're, we're thinking. Did, did you wanna share anything, Cassie?
Yeah, maybe just a quick reminder where we currently are on the bond planning timeline, might be helpful. Um, so the
Would it be good to have her to be able to be on the video so we can hear it a little bit?
Go sit by Arla.
Yeah.
Yell it out.
This is what you're looking forward to.
We'll get a message and go, what was that?
Okay, so for the, the bond planning, we've been working on this for about ten months to a year so far. And we're coming up to the end of the bond committee's initial work in which they create a draft recommendation. And then put it out to the community for feedback. And when I say draft recommendation, usually that's maybe two or three options. Because we want people to compare and contrast, you know, what are the different needs in the district. We were originally planning to kinda settle on that draft recommendation in tomorrow night's meeting. But even last month, I would say the bond committee was a little skittish on settling on something. And I think things have, since March, even gotten a little more volatile on the national stage, right? So I would imagine they'll kinda continue to be a little skittish tomorrow night as well. But the levy also kinda plays into their thinking too and wondering how that ties in. So what we've planned to do is add an additional meeting for the bond committee in May. And hopefully we'll be able to settle on some recommend, draft recommendations during that date. And then the plan has always been to put those drafts out to the community in a really robust feedback period. Basically, um, you know, website, mailers, meetings, getting in front of anybody you can get in front of. You know, one-on-one conversations, just, you know, blasting it out there. The plan right now, assuming you're still looking at February of twenty-six for the bond, I gotta remember what year it is. Would be to have that community feedback period be kinda roughly that end of May through October timeframe. Then the bond committee would pull back together in October. They'd say, what do we hear? Settle on a final recommendation, take that to you, the board, with their recommendation. And then if the board wanted to move forward with that February twenty-six election, you'd have to make that decision in November and file in February, or file in December in order to be ready for February. And I think you all remember that timeline, cause it's kinda similar to what you did for the levy last time. So I think one of the considerations in the levy discussion is also how you're approaching, what you're communicating to the community about the levy and also what you're asking them to comment on for the bond. And I think that with the August versus November discussion, with, you know, an August election, you're needing to file in early May.
Yeah, we would, we would need to vote on a resolution at the April meeting because filing has to happen. And that would be really tight for Dan to get everything turned in everywhere on time. Cause it has to be filed by that Friday, May second. And I think, what, what I, and without telling you what to do, cause that is not my job. But with the input that we've had so far, since we did the survey and the community conversations. And with where it kinda feels like you're leaning towards really engaging the community on a much deeper level. I'm not sure that gives you time to do that. I know it doesn't give you time to do it before the bond resolution. But it depends on how you and Christine structure that, or all of us until June. And then Christine moving forward for the next few months. And so while it would be possible to do that after filing, I'm not, I'm not sure that that's where you wanted. You have that thought about whether you wanna engage the community before we file the resolution.
Look at the survey, okay, I wanna remind myself, on the community survey, what was the?
August thirty-five didn't care and fifteen said November on the survey.
That was the survey, but, but we asked in the forum also.
Yeah, so.
And that was you.
Yeah, so when we talked about that, the big part of the August-November debate. There's a couple of things that I thought were interesting that came up. One was, a lot of people look at November saying, hey, if there's not a lot on the ballot, you don't want another ballot to go out with just the school levy on it, like it was for February.
They did.
So November would be an idea, right? But then there's the flip side of any of the snowbirds voters that may not be here. It may have already gone south for the winter, that wouldn't be here. You're already in October getting your tax bill, right? And you're having to pay that tax bill by October thirty-first. So that may be a deterrent from going in November and going in August, which is kind of an interesting piece. August.
I did, I have it in front of me, but I didn't, Jackie did some research for us. And Mason County office said that they can't tell us the number of races that will be on the ballot yet in August. Those haven't been determined and they won't be able to, cause that'll depend on more, that would be more on some primary kinds of races. As opposed to, and they haven't heard from anybody else that's making any levy type decisions at this point. The November election though, is going to have about sixty items on it. And so that our cost for that election, because we would have three races, races and the levy. Three people running, or three positions open and the levy. So even with all four things in November, our cost would be eleven to thirteen thousand in Mason County. And, um, and then in Kitsap County, they don't have specific details they could give us yet about what would be on the ballot. But our cost in Kitsap County could be as low as three hundred and forty-six. That's what we paid in November, when all the small districts like us were on the ballot. And, or up to two thousand, which is about what we paid in Kitsap County this time. But this time in Mason County, it was thirty.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three and a half.
Thirty-three and a half. And if we had to pay the whole thing, the whole cost of the Mason County ballot was fifty-one thousand. So that's what we know about that at this point. And that we'll keep trying to get that updated, but.
So I guess the question is, is do we wanna get, if there's sixty things on the ballot, right? Does that mean we get lost in the weeds, right? On the ballot and somebody going, no, 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 and we just get caught up or?
Or are they going, yes, yes, yes?
Yeah, are they going, yes, 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 yes? We don't know, but.
And does it, does it all of a sudden make it so, you know, the focus is on us? If we're the only ones on the ballot and then all of a sudden, if there's a lot of things on the ballot, then all of a sudden, maybe we don't seem like the biggest fish to fry.
True.
Anymore for some of these folks.
I think that's a lot. I mean, I think we're putting a lot of talk into that. But I really think that people out here are looking for it. They know it's coming and they don't know when. But I think what I hear out there is they're thinking it's gonna come in, that we're gonna say August. Um, that's what I hear. That's kind of in my head too, in my feelers, I felt. For me, I don't know if anybody else thought before they got here, I think we should run it on this one, you know, or whatever. I think we've kind of already thought to ourselves where we wanted to put it. To me, I think August is really responsible as far as feeling it out. And I know there's other factors, but I don't think we're going to either stand out or be lost in the weeds. Because I think we stand out no matter what. But people are focusing on it, they know what it ma, they know that it matters.
But what I do, what I was trying, what you'd understand too, and I really don't have an opinion on this. But if it's in August and nothing else is on the ballot, that's fifty-one thousand dollars. That could have been a whole para plus their benefits.
Sure.
So.
People will point that out to us.
Yes, and people will point that out to us. So I, I just think.
People wanna put it on the ballot, I just want it on the ballot.
Right, and I think one thing for you all to know, and I don't know, it'll make, I think, will make it easier for you all when you finally decide this. Maybe it won't, but. We're building the budget now, we're gonna build a budget now that you are gonna have to approve by July tenth, the preliminary budget for next year. And by August, whatever the board meeting is in August, but before August thirty-first, a budget for next year. And if we were to go in August, which is a possibility, that is, that election is on August fifth. That is not enough time for our finance department to build a completely new budget. So you will still be approving the budget.
Right.
That we are building right now. And then Dan would have to bring to you budget, which hopefully he will do, whether it is in August or November, would bring to you budget revisions to upgrade that budget to reflect a pass levy. So I guess the point I'm trying to make there is, we're going to build the budget, that's the bare bones budget. And you're going to pass the levy when you pass it and then increase the budget. So we're not in a hurry to get it done, to get it done by August thirty-first. Cause I, we can't have our people in.
Right.
Working those kinds of hours to try to get that done.
The other, um, I think important distinction related to the bond project for the board to consider is, so if we stick with our planned bond outreach communication schedule, if the levy were to be on the August ballot, your messaging would be, it's the levy's locked in, but we'd like your feedback on the bond. If you choose November for the levy, then we can do a period of time where we're like, we would like your feedback on both of these. And then the levy would need to lock in by August for then you to reach the November ballot.
I have the same thought when you were saying that timeline, just in terms of messaging and confusion. And people hearing one thing and then they assume they heard it and that it was about the bond, but it was really about the levy. And, um, I just worry about that. If May through October is when we're collecting feedback on the bond, but we're expecting people to vote like in August on the levy, right? Like, it just feels potentially confusing, that's just one.
But then that idea of combining the.
That I like.
Getting your conversation going. Because I think what that does too, because we know we need, we need a bond, we need a levy and we need a bond. And what that does in combining those conversations is that helps people under, give their feedback on both and understand why we need both and get everything out that they need to say so that hopefully they can vote for both. I, it, it could be a really powerful way to message that.
I think too, that it takes the transparency level and just kicks it up to a whole nother notch. I mean, that's intentional, but also the reactive transparency of people seeing the things together, seeing the challenges together, recognizing why there are two separate things where I'm afraid if we do the August and then come back later, then it looks like we're maybe trying to slide something in.
Yeah.
Well, and you have the opportunity for Christine to get here in July and hit the ground running, going out and meeting people and being part of those conversations. And I think there's a lot of power in Christine introducing herself, talking about the levy and the bond. And just, that, that could be super powerful in, in a way that other ways of doing it might not be.
Yeah.
And like, maybe, I, I think this is probably a very small thing, but I'm trying to look at different things. I also think with three different individuals running for positions, one of the reasons why I ran, or why I came out to volunteer is I got tired of seeing the voting pamphlets that saw no opposition. Yet I heard people complaining about the school district. And yet no one was running for office. I'm like, anyway, I just, I feel that it will give us a additional opportunity for us. If we have multiple people running, then perfect, we have even more messengers to give the message out there. But also if we don't have anybody, if we have unopposed positions, then that's a very strong message to say, look, we are dying to help the community, but right now, we're the only ones volunteering to do this. So cut us some slack and work with us.
Exactly.
You have a sticker there.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's yours, that's yours.
Really long.
No, I.
Cut me some slack to be one of the winners.
But I do think that it is, I mean, it's, I think that could be a win-win, again, like.
Yeah, I, we know that there's higher turnout in November and this year isn't a midterm. So I don't think it's gonna be maybe as polarizing as other election years, I think.
Well, yes, I, I think what I do like about November is it, it does allow Christine to.
Get her legs.
Get her, be here for a while, get some messaging together, get out there, you know, and kinda talk about all those great things. Where it's, it's August, she's gonna be having to hit the ground like in a full dead, jetpack on her back sprint.
Yeah.
Right, to get some.
Well, and we want to get to all those places and July is a hard time.
And people are gone.
So.
So is Christine going, when you're building the new budget, does Christine?
Yeah, she's in conversation with us on all of it.
I mean, I didn't, didn't think you guys were hiding it or anything, like, secretly telling, she's gonna get here and see it.
So I, I, I include her on, on a lot of the emails that I send. We are, the team is including her in discussions, she'll be here this week, meeting with the team and I. She's been part of the two hiring of the admin positions that we have right now. So she's, she's getting really acclimated.
So I think, I guess here's the question is, so. How do we feel right now about August? Are all of us, we kinda seem to be going in the direction that August is kind of gonna be out. We're all thinking November is where we're at, or what are we all thinking?
Sounds like Dan needs extra time, so, I mean, for Dan's sake.
Dan just come back.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that synopsis.
Yeah, it's how I'm feeling, because it even, because we have to vote in two weeks for August, right? We have to vote in April. And I don't know, anytime that it's like our back against the wall, it doesn't feel like we need to be rushing.
And I think we know a little bit more now, after having that community meeting and the surveys. We know a little bit more than we did of the why it failed. You know, we're hearing more of that back now. And I think that helps to be able to make this decision, right? With trying to figure out, do you go in August or November? If we go in November, it gives us a little bit.
I'll say.
I, and either way, I think coming out of this meeting, we use the feedback that we've received and the names of the people that were there to build and strengthen a levy committee and get that started.
We definitely.
For sure.
And we need to make sure that, I think, that we're gonna have to have really good participation from not only the community but everybody to get, to get that messaging out.
Yeah, I would love that, I really liked being on the levy committee. But also when we made the levy meetings and all the meetings that we were going to, like, we're here. I think every single one connected where I got to go to two and then I got to listen in on one. Or did I come in on video one? But I, maybe offsetting was a little bit or having.
Just to, um, just to throw this out there, it doesn't change how I feel about November. But if it fails in November, we are too late to run it in February, right? That, which would be the same time as the bond.
Um, we have till December what to file, Jackie?
But it is a fresh cycle.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
You can only run twice in a calendar year, so that would be the next year.
Yeah.
It's early December, I don't have.
It's early December.
December twelfth, we need to file to run February tenth.
So you could vote at a November meeting and you could, we could, you could bring up and do that.
I just want to make sure. I just, yeah, I had, I had written final recommendation in October, this was for the bond though, for February. But I see what you're saying, there's time.
You would be putting them both potentially on the ballot together.
If it fail, I'm not saying.
If it fail, and, but you know, I think one of the things I really appreciated as part of the data that we pulled together for the last couple of board meetings to talk about that, Jackie went back and did a lot of research for us back to nineteen sixty. And so we can see, you know, the history of bonds and levies in our community. And although in recent attempts, we haven't been as successful doing them together, we were at a, at one point in time in this community, very successful in that way, like many other districts are. So it really is about people having all the information they need to be able to vote yes.
And I was just gonna say, the two factors that jumped out to me tonight was the, even if we got it in August, we still wouldn't affect the budget, and then also the cost.
Yeah, that's huge. Running, I think.
Yeah, the cost, the cost of running costs.
If, if it's the only thing on the ballot, that's really expensive.
And do we know that?
Right now, we don't know of anything else that is on the ballot, because Jackie, this answer we got was today.
Yeah.
So.
And they have the same filing deadlines as us, so it's-
So do we want to take action to officially, so we need to, we don't have to?
No, because you're not, you're not getting something ready to do a reservation necessarily, so you don't really have to take action right now.
Okay.
But we do it a certain way.
At some point, you will have to take action.
Before, yeah, filing.
But then we're gonna need to take action at the next board meeting to reconstitute the levy committee?
No, you don't need to take action to do that, we need to just start advertising for it. But I think what would be really good to do at the next board meeting would be to have a brief synopsis of the discussion we had tonight.
Yeah.
And that you were planning to.
I have a question. The previous levy committee that I was a part of, I feel like a huge chunk of the discussion initially, when the committee convened was timing. And since we feel like in agreement about the timing, when you constitute this group of people, could that pose a problem if like, the group is like, no?
Yeah, because what you did, what we've done on other occasions has been, the levy comes together and they talk about that, and then they talk about the message. So what you are, what our discussion today, it, we understand how serious the need is. We're, nine percent of our budget is not going to be there. And there's added pressure, but we can't worry about that right this second. We are, our budgeting, our team is worrying about it. But, I mean, for our district, if every federal dollar we had disappeared, that's another nine percent. We're being very conservative in how we budget, but we're also being very hyper vigilant about watching what's happening so that we can do what we need to do to respond to anything related to those things. And right now, things are concerning, but right now, I think our district is, we're, we're okay as far as those federal dollars goes, but we're keeping an eye on that. Because frankly, the stance that some of our state leaders are taking is, is putting our federal dollars in more danger than they might need to be. And so it's, it's just something that we're, I will keep you really informed as we move through the spring, so, yeah, I think we're okay.
I just mean, yeah, we're not at risk of like the committee coming back and being, I mean, like-
Well, I mean, there's, there might be some people, but I think, we, you guys heard really clearly at the conversation that people want those things.
Even the biggest, even the biggest opponent, right, that I would say was in the room, understands the value-
Sure.
-of what it brings, right? I heard a lot of, man, I didn't know that, right?
Yeah.
Or, oh, I, like, I didn't realize, I even heard one that she brought up something about, you know, discipline data, and like, we need to be more disciplined. I said, well, did you watch the board meeting where they presented all the discipline data? Did you look at that? Oh, I didn't see it, right? And it's just like, well, hey, go back and take a look, right? At that board meeting, and look at that stuff. And I think that's the type of messaging, I think that levy committee really needs to be focused around, is the why you need to vote yes for this, and how we need to message that out.
So when we advertise for this group, are we advertising it as if like, we're looking for a levy messaging committee? We're having a levy?
Well, and I think you could start by going to those people that showed up for that meeting. They were pretty passionate.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I'm gonna sound like a complete hypocrite here. We talk about transparency, but I've already seen people with the, they're gonna try to bring it back, don't let them slip it in or slip it past you. And it, I, I guess what I'm saying is, they're already working to get ahead on their messaging. I would like for us, before it gets too much out there, for us to make sure that we just have it dialed in, what our messaging is gonna be.
Agreed.
So, just so that we don't have something that just goes off half-cocked.
Agreed, I couldn't agree more.
Okay.
Okay, well, with that said, um, save it, any other discussion? Could we have six, forty-eight? Okay, we will adjourn this meeting, we will be back in this barroom on April twenty-eighth at six-thirty for our next meeting, and anyone that would like to come out and catch a softball game on Thursday, come down to the field, any superintendent will be there.
Oh, cool.
What time?
Fourth of September fifteenth.
I can talk my wife in her birthday.
Is Christine throwing out the pitch?
Awesome.